And call the annual meeting to order at five oh eight P M. I have to read this long paragraph again, um, so please take notice that pursuant to section seven E of Illinois Open Meetings Act. Five I L C S one twenty slash seven E. And the gubernatorial disaster proclamation issued by Governor J B Pritzker on January third, two thousand and twenty one. The Board of Trustees for the Decatur Public Library is conducting this meeting by audio and or video conference. We do not see that we have any other public comments. So, next thing is participation in non-resident card program.
Yeah, yeah, this is two, this is a two parter, uh, so we, there are, there are many. Portions of Illinois that don't, do not have public library service. So, those people who reside in those areas can get a public library card at their nearest public library. So, you know, if you're closer to Mount Zion, that's where you have to go. If you're, if you're closer to Kankakee, that's where you have to go, but if Decatur is your closest public library. Uh, each year you guys decide whether we want to participate in this now. We don't do it for free, uh, we charge a fee, uh, we charge a fee based on a formula and that's, that's the next item. But, uh, first of all, you have to decide whether or not we want to participate in this. So, that's the, that's the first thing, uh. Two to four a year.
Okay, and there's no, no real benefits in not doing it.
Uh, well. Uh, that gets into a little bit of a, of a hairy area because. Now, uh, children have to, uh, uh, children who are under the poverty level and, and. Disabled veterans, uh, we have to provide them, uh, with a free card now. I'm gonna sound like the worst person in the world, I, I think that's right for the disabled veterans because they can get a property tax break if they lived in, in Decatur, you know, in town. Uh, but, we have children, lots and lots and lots and lots of children in Decatur who live under the poverty line. And their, their parents don't get this tax break. And I, you know, uh, to me, it is, it, it is a disincentive to. Bring those areas into tax-supported public library service, but, uh, it. It doesn't affect Decatur Public Library very much at all because almost every unserved area. In Illinois is closer to a different library, they're very, I mean, even, you know, even in, in Macon County. Okay, that almost every unserved area in Macon County is closer to a different library, so.
Okay, so.
We, we, we've participated in it forever.
Yeah, so does anybody want to make a motion to participate in the non-resident card program? Okay, I'm, I'll second, okay. So, any discussion, like, any other discussion on this? Okay, so, we'll go down the list, so it's Sophia.
Yes.
Carl.
Hi.
Susan. Jacoby.
Yes.
All right, and Samantha, yes, okay, so we are gonna participate in the non-resident card program. The cost of the non-resident card.
We've always used, uh, it's in your packet here, we've always used the, uh, the mathematical formula whereby we look at all of our local. Uh, property tax sources, what are last year, what we collected, uh, we divide that by the total population. Uh, and so for us, that's, uh, two, two million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars divided by seventy thousand five hundred and twenty-two. That equals forty-one point four seven, then we multiply that number by, uh, the average household. The average number of persons in the household in Decatur, which is now two point two one, and we come up with ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Now, that's gone up because the population's gone down, so when you have fewer people to share the cost, the average cost goes up. So, uh, it would be ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents per card per year.
And we can't waive it, we've talked about that before, like, it's not negotiable.
We can't, we can't, uh, but, but, again, it will be free for, uh, you know, anybody that shows us proof of that they're a disabled veteran. And, uh, any, uh, any child under the poverty, uh, uh, under the poverty line. I don't think we've, I don't think we've had one child non-resident card since I've been here.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion to approve the cost of the non-resident card?
Make the motion.
All right, so, Sophia, are you there? All right, well, is there any discussion first?
No, there's a lot of math, that's all I'm saying.
I know, yeah.
Like, oh my, that's a lot of math.
Yeah, so Sophia.
Yes.
Carl. Susan.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
And Samantha, yes, okay, so, that cost is approved, next is annual reports. Hopefully, you guys have had a chance to take a look at them.
Yeah, we simply have to, uh, uh, and, and probably vote on each one, uh, individually, uh, to, to. Submit, so the first is the, uh, it says I P R up there at the top, uh, that's the Illinois Public Library Annual Report. That is required by law and we, uh, it's a state report, we were, it's our report to the state. It's primarily statistical, but you'll see that much of it's financial also. Um, and some of it is about personnel, uh, and some of it's about you guys. They want to know where you live because they want to know you live in Decatur. Uh, I've redacted those from this public document, but they will, those addresses from the public document, but they will be in the. Uh, in the online submission.
Um, anything else on that, or do you just want us to go ahead and vote on it?
I don't, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know, I know that there, there's a lot there, but.
Are we just making a motion to send this to the state?
Yep. And I will, I will, I will have to electronically sign Samantha and Carl's name to, as president and secretary.
Okay, anybody second?
I'll second.
All right, we do roll call, any discussion before that? All right, Sophia.
Yes.
Carl. Susan.
Yes.
And Jacoby.
Yes.
Yes, all right, so we will send that to the state. So, next is the trustees' report to mayor and council, this was the one that we did, uh, in the finance and properties.
The finance, finance committee has vetted this report, uh, it is, again, this is something required by law. Uh, and it's a strange one because, for us, because it's primarily financial numbers. And, uh, they keep our books, so, uh, I put it in a different format and send it back to them because law says I have to.
Okay, does anybody want to make that motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, Sophia, and then. All right, Susan, all right, any discussion on this one?
I do, I do think it's funny that we have to send them all of our books. Keep our book.
It gets read, I mean, I've had, I've had individual council members talk to me about it, so it does get read, so.
But that's good.
So, we'll do roll call, so Sophia.
Yeah.
Carl. Susan. And Jacoby.
Yes.
And Samantha, yes, all right, that one we will send to the mayor and the council, the last one's the city librarians' report to board.
That's my report to you guys, not required by law, uh, it's just my summary of, of the year. Uh, and it was a. Honestly, it was a blur of a year, so I, it's. I, COVID's done funny things to my mind, uh, but it, twenty twenty was, was easier to summarize in some ways. It all kind of, I don't know, it kind of ran together, I really depend on, uh, departmental reports to, to, for me to be able to put this together. But, uh, you know, I think all things considered, and that's a lot, uh, we had a pretty good year.
Do we need to vote on this one? Because this one's just our work.
I, I, it doesn't hurt, but I don't think it's a requirement.
Okay, I'm not gonna worry about it then.
So, I will put, uh, uh, the, there is a packet, a couple of things for you to sign Samantha, uh, physically. I will put a packet together and leave it with Michelle, I'll be in a training all day tomorrow and I'll be out of the office on Friday.
Okay, I will try to get in there within the next three days, so.
Yeah, and then we'll send it, I, I just have to have it filed, the, by, the, I, the I P R filed by sixty days after the end of the fiscal year. Other than, and, and we have to send the report to the mayor and council, so we've got until Monday to get it in, in our office mail.
Okay. Um, the next thing is the election of officers for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, action, so. Um, so we do have to vote on new election or new officers, um, since this is my last year on the board. Um, so, does anybody have a very strong, you know, suggestion of who they either want to be the president? Or, um, they want to be the president, I don't know if that's how we norm, like, normally, we, ideally, we do a nominating committee. But that did not get done, and that was my fault, so I apologize.
Yeah, and as I said in my email, it's, it's absolutely you guys' uh, you guys' call, of course, but, you know, typically. What we've done since I've been here is everybody kind of moves up one notch and, uh, that would, which would mean. In, in our case, Sophia becoming president, Carl vice president, and then a, a new secretary. But, uh, there's nothing in the bylaws that requires that, that's just been tradition, I don't know whether it's an eight-year tradition or, or a longer one. But that's the way we've done it.
Samantha, you cannot be president again?
No. I mean, I appreciate that vote of confidence, but.
I just can't believe that you're leaving us, that's not really fair.
I know, I mean, I would like to put out there that I'm gonna stay on the foundation if I can, so.
So, you're giving up a president's seat and you're leaving the board, that's double, you double dip it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That worked in a whole different way. Two clarifying questions, so, so one, last year you'd be on the board, like, calendar year, or we take this vote and this is your last meeting?
June.
So she would be president until June.
So. Yeah, uh, no, it starts, it starts right away, how does that, I think it starts right away. So, this has always been confusing, and I'll tell you guys why, so we, we used to have, uh. Uh, we did the annual meeting in December or something like that, or January, we switched, I mean. We've got, it's, the annual meeting is tied to the fiscal year, and then the city changed our fiscal year a few years ago. Um, and, and made it calendar year. So, the annual meeting has to be, there's no way I can get all the information by the end of January, so it has to be in February. But, so we thought about moving the terms, I think, I think it is that they start in July. Uh, because we thought about moving the terms, but then the, the thinking of that was. It's good to have somebody, the president still there for a while to kind of show the ropes to the, to the incoming person, I think.
I mean, I do, I agree with that. I think it's really helpful.
But we probably ought to put it in the bylaws and make it more clear, because it's not, it just says we have the election at the annual meeting.
Yes, so.
So I'm good with the slate that you've mentioned.
Leaves out, except that leaves out a secretary, so, I mean.
So we still need a secretary.
If Sophia becomes the incoming president and Carl the incoming vice president, then we still would need a secretary. So, usually, you, you think, well, who's not here? Secretary is a.
Hey, hey, listen, hey, I, I, just with respect to Carl being here, I, I don't, I don't know if the secretary is a dump-off position.
It's a, you, you gotta sign a couple of things, uh, and, and, uh, it's really more about, um. Succession.
Yeah, this is the future V P we're talking about.
More or less, yeah.
Exactly.
And then president, Jacoby, I think you're the man for the job.
I think you are too.
That's not, that's not, that's not what I was saying, I was just trying to make sure that I respected the position. At the level I thought it needed to be respected. I'm a little, I'm a little extra, I'm a little extra busy. Uh, I, I, I'm, 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 I'm in school, I'm, 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 you know, full-time working, full-time school, I don't know.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, and, and, and the president fore, forewarned me about. How exhausting is, it is to work and go to school and do this, so I'm a, I'm a dodge some heading.
You know who I think would be good is, um. Can't think of her name now.
Ame?
Yes, or.
Alana.
Alana?
Kelly?
Kelly?
Susan, was it Susan?
What the heck?
We should, we were just going through the list of people, so.
That's who I think would be good.
This is looking like it's gonna be somebody that's not here anyway.
Yes, I, I was like, I don't know, I got a phone call a second ago, so I had to like pause for a second, I apologize. Is there ability to table this until next month, to actually like?
Right, yeah.
Give somebody a little bit of prep as opposed to be like, yeah, you on the call, here you go, there you go. I, I, cause I know.
Oh, I know.
And or Alana probably would like to be involved, unfortunately they're not here this evening.
My take is, per the, per the, the, the bylaws, you probably at least ought to fill the, the top two slots here. If there's no, if there's no disagreement on that, you can hold on.
Yeah, like.
I have a question, what day is our meeting next month?
What day of the week, or, or?
No, what day?
Twenty-first, no, that's, that's April seventeen.
Yeah, yeah, it's be the same as this month, uh, even though we didn't end up having it on seventeen.
I'd, I'd tell you what, Carl, I might have to hit you up and get some information on the secretary spot.
I mean.
Jacoby or the best.
Just to do the due diligence, just to do the due diligence on.
I think Carl would tell you that he didn't do a whole lot, except sign some things, so. He signed it some things and helped, uh, people get sworn in, no, that was Rick, no, it was. I don't remember, anyway.
I remember.
Secretary normally does that, but we have had a lot of situations where other people have had to step in.
Okay, so, um, as it stands, we have nominated Sophia as the president. Carl is vice president and secretary is being tabled until next month, is that correct? Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
I would like to.
I second.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Not, not, not making a, not making a motion, just like to acknowledge that I have no issue with it, but I didn't even say yes.
We have a lot of faith in you, Carl.
I know, I know, yeah. Okay, if that's okay, then somebody.
I already, I already agreed, it was just commonly the fact.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
There we go.
Somebody want a second, okay, all right, so we'll do roll call, any other discussion before we do this? Okay, Sophia.
Yes.
Carl. Susan.
Yes.
And Jacoby.
Yes.
And Samantha, yes, okay. It's crazy, it's like.
President X.
I know, Sophia, get ready.
President.
So, that means that next month I start being president?
No.
Or, okay.
July one.
July one.
Okay.
June is my last meeting, is that correct?
At some point, though, I think I should probably start going to the P, the P P R meeting because I've never been to one.
Yep.
You're always welcome.
Yep.
Love it, Sophia's ready to go, look at it, president X.
I'm ready, I'm ready, except for, I'm leaving town the seventeenth, I could. Be on Zoom, but I can't be in person.
Yeah.
Carl, I'm, I'm disappointed that you don't think this is top-notch camaraderie.
I really wish I was there in person. All right, um, so next is, uh, committee.
I'm ready for in-person.
Committee and liaison appointments, um, so. I don't know, I don't know, I was not prepared for this.
I, 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 can I make a suggestion? I think what you did with the friends board was actually very beneficial, just to just rotate through.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah.
And I think that that, A, makes it more fair, and B, just people understand what the friends do. As a result of being able to go to their meetings.
Yeah.
Who's going next month?
Um, I don't remember, but that is something I need to reach out to that person. My instinct is that it's Alana. But I don't remember.
Pretty good instincts.
You mean our new secretary?
Well, I don't know when she's gonna be in town, so, and it's not like they do Zoom calls, so, like. I don't know, um, so I will, I will work on that for sure.
Yeah, and you could always table this item too, I mean, it's.
Well, because, I mean, the committee won't need to be changed, because Sophia really can't chair the finance and properties. Um, since she is, will be the president, um. And Carl can stay, Carl, do you want us to continue being the P P P R? Okay, um, and then what other appointments do we?
I think Jacoby should become the, uh. Until June or July.
The other liaison appointment is, uh, is foundation.
Oh, yeah. He keeps getting frozen.
There's a lot, there's a lot of angling going on in here about these.
Jacoby, you need some better internet.
Maybe.
You can get a hotspot from the library.
Whole lot of, the, the whole, it's just a whole lot of devices running at one time, man, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, come get a hotspot from the library.
I mean, if, if we didn't have, you know, sickness, then we would have been in person, like, it just didn't work out this month.
Well, I mean, I mean, so aren't we, I, I mean, isn't, isn't the ban lifted, though? I mean, you know, CDC, Illinois usually follows CDC, CDC says, if you, uh, totally vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. If you're unvaxxed.
But if you have COVID, you still should not be.
Right.
Out for five days unma-.
Yeah.
Masked or unmasked, and then for another five days masked.
Yeah, and there was some. I didn't ask, but like, I forgot to ask, but, sorry.
Yeah, so I mean, I, that's what I thought, I thought we would have met last week or this week.
We met in person before and you've been on Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there, I was there, well, yeah, I think the last group, group meeting, I've zoomed it, but I was, went to like two or three in person.
Yeah, some of it's just my brain.
Yeah, my, my question is, I, I'm not even sure we'll be able to do. Uh, all Zoom meetings after, after the twenty-eighth, I, I actually, because it's because of the disaster proclamation, I, it. If the, I don't know whether the disaster proclamation has been allowed to, will be allowed to expire. If so, then we won't even have this option.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean that there's not, that, that some individuals can't attend electronically under certain circumstances. But, we can't have an all Zoom, I, I'm not sure we'll be able to have an all Zoom meeting after next week.
Okay.
Now, after next week, would it still be an option for people to zoom in if for any reason somebody had COVID or couldn't. Come in person to the meeting, because technically the CDC says that if you accidentally have COVID, you have to spend five days from onset of symptoms.
Correct, and it wouldn't have to just be COVID, uh, but there are, there's cer, there are certain parameters, I mean, if you're. If you're, I, I, I can send those out again, but it's, it's, it's in the bylaws, but the bylaws are taken, it's directly from Illinois statute. Um, if you have a medical or a family or a work emergency. Uh, and can only attend electronically, and you give notice to, uh. The director of the agency, and it might, we might say, or president, um, and that notices at least one hour in advance. Uh, then yes, uh, uh, but, the rest of the board can vote to say no.
No.
You have two-thirds, you have two-thirds of them saying no, then.
Carl.
You don't have to be allowed to do it, so, it's, uh, and that was passed actually before COVID hit, so.
Yeah, so, I, yeah, some of it, and we didn't have a room big enough, like. So, or, you know, not necessarily this week, I forgot to even ask about that, so that was kind of my fault.
All, all these rules will make your head spin.
Yeah, I was, I was just out of it, so, honestly, but, um, so. Committees, um, we've got P P P R, Finance and Properties Foundation, so we do have. Um, Carl has said he would continue to chair the P P P R, we do need somebody for finance and properties. And I'm assuming that Shelley would be still cool with being the foundation, um, lia, liaison. Um, along with myself, um.
I would recommend that the finance committee, we can discuss that next meeting amongst ourselves, and then. Um, if somebody wants to be the chair, I, I, it's up to you, but I, I would recommend that.
Okay, so we can, we can potentially table the finance properties, um. But why don't we go ahead and do the ones we can do, because Shelley, she, she said no problem, like, for foundation, what's up?
Do you have the vote on D E I chair?
No, um, right now, well, we don't, but we can.
Just curious, that was part of the bylaws, I know we did that, like.
It wasn't, it's not part of the bylaws.
It's an ad hoc committee, uh, so it doesn't have to be part of this, but, uh, uh, yeah, if you want to pass that mantle on. Carl, we can talk about that.
Already have, it's Alana.
Okay.
Currently, now, we can, we can talk about changing that, but I'm just not currently the chair.
No, I mean, that's, that, that's totally fine with me, and, uh, yeah, it's not, it's not a board committee and it's ad hoc. But, uh, I think Alana would be a fine chair of that committee, and I'm not even sure what role, I mean. Uh, uh, our, Deanna Jones says there will be a role for the, an ongoing role for that committee. I'm just not sure what is gonna be from here on out, right now, the D E I Engagement Committee is going to be, has been taken away, so.
Okay, I would like an update on that, but I don't think anybody's here that can.
Yeah, Carol is kind of our liaison and, and Alana, so it would have to come from one of them.
Okay, well, hopefully, Alana can join us at the next meeting.
I don't know if it cut out on me, but I, I would like to be considered for Sophia's old chair that she's vacate. Well, she has forced, she's forced to vacate.
Finance.
Wow, you got a donut?
I think you'd be good, no.
I think you, I also think you'd be great at the finance, uh, chair, so. If you're willing to be, um, considered, I think you're gonna find it, I don't know, if I'm talking for everybody, but find it unanimous. So.
I mean, you're good with math, you understand math, so that's really what you need.
It's, it's just asking questions, really, like, just looking at the paperwork and then, um. Yeah, so, okay, so why don't we go ahead and make the motion? If, um, if with this, the current slate that we have for P P P R will remain Carl. Um, finance and properties will be Jacoby as of July first. And foundation will be Shelley, um, who is still continuing her role on that committee.
Right, but in Sophia's.
Rotating.
Yeah, and Sophia's automatic on the, on the foundation, so as of July one, she will automatically become. And if you want to remain on there, that you'd be an at-large, Samantha, you'd be at-large.
Yep, that, that was my plan, so, does, uh, anyone want to make that motion? So, does, uh, anyone want to make that motion?
I make the motion.
Okay, all right, so we'll do our roll call. So Sophia?
Yes.
Carl?
Hi.
And Jacoby?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. Okay, well, that makes me feel really great, cause I just feel like it's waving it in great hands here, so. Uh, so is there anything else, um, before we adjourn? All right, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, roll call, Sophia? I know, discussion.
He, make your hand.
Carl?
Hi.
Susan? Did you say yes? Sorry. Oh, Jacoby? Now he has his hand raised.
He got switched.
And Samantha, yeah.
Down at the bottom, uh, reactions.
You became the first now.
All right, guys, the, so the meeting is currently adjourned at five thirty-nine.